Please call the role.
Mayor Williams. Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Sipper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Great. We're going to skip the additional agenda items until the mayor arrives, but we could go right into their public comment period. It'll be a really short public comment period today. We could do the city manager's comments.
Do you all want to come in and say?
Or do we want to do council comments? Oh yeah, we should do council comments first.
Okay, let me stop my light.
Stall it out.
Sorry, I'm new to this.
You want me to go first?
Yes, go first.
All right, great. So, I got to start my evening at 7:00 tonight at Capital City Cheesecake for the third of the Folk Festival's concert series. And tonight is another youth band, because we're doing all youth bands. And the group is Label Fight. And they're a local group of kids. And they've been performing at Folk Festival. And they even got written up in the German version of Rolling Stones, so they're very excited about that. All original music, so it's a lot of fun. And I was there tonight, and the place was packed. And there were adults and there were kids. It was, it's really terrific, so that has been working out. The Folk Festival's thinking about doing some others. The fourth of the series, which is the last of the series, is on May 12. And it's from 7:00 to 8:30, again, at Capital City Cheesecake. And it's Darryl Day and Kristen Cattigan. I don't know these folks, but I know that the first three concerts that we've had have been really good, so I'm hoping people will come to the fourth one and enjoy the, my favorite is the Cookies and Cream Cheesecake. I think I really like that one. So it's folk plus work plus free equals fun for Thursday, the 12th. And that's all I wanted to talk about.
Cool.
It's like your button on.
Yeah. I think I should be filibustering, like any good book or novel I started reading or something like that. Just excited to be here on a Thursday night to talk about the city budget. Seriously, I look forward to hearing about the Recreation Department, the Police Department, and the Library. All the departments are my favorite departments, but I do like these three topics. And I think they're three that are, you know, critical to our city. Recreation Department providing many valuable services to young and old. I know that's a focus of both ends of the spectrum, but we also serve people in the middle. So excited to hear about that and what we have going on there and what the plans are. As always, like to engage and discuss with the Police Department. Maybe we'll get to talk about Fusion Centers again tonight. I know that's a very hot, exciting topic. And then lastly, the Library, you know, is a fabulous resource for residents. And I think, you know, I was on the Friends of Tacoma Park Library for a couple of years and really appreciated the efforts that that body makes to help contribute to the resources to the Library. And I think we're unique in the sense that not only we, I think the only truly city library in terms of designation in Maryland, but also, no one's ever shown me the numbers, but I bet we are, in Montgomery, one of the libraries that has the largest population of people that can easily walk to its library. Which, the Silver Spring Library, probably when it gets up to, when it gets built, will be, its new location will rival us in that front, but I think it is something to note that the existence of our library provides library services and technology service, technology access to a large number of people who can walk to it, many of which are low and moderate income. Thanks.
Great. I guess it's time to begin the city manager's comments. Do you want to?
Fred.
Fred. Oh, Fred, thank you. Fred, Councilmember Schultz, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, well, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to have the opportunity to participate from this remote location in this meeting, because it's, as Councilmember Wright is saying, these are three very important agencies in our, in our local government. And thank goodness for modern technology, so that I can participate in what I consider to be an extremely important part of our budget. Because the Recreation Department and the Library Department are two departments that go a very long ways to making Tacoma Park a place where everybody wants to live. And the Police Department is so vital to make it possible for us all to live here. So that's all I really want to say, except that I was swimming in the Atlantic Ocean this morning off of Hilton Head Island, and the water was very pleasant. So I'm sorry that none of you could be there, but, you know, I would, I would make it if I could make it possible, I would.
We're playing a violin for you.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for that reminder. City manager, have any comments?
Just two brief items. I think the chief had mentioned in prior comments to the council that we had some sighting issues we were trying to work out with the camera on 410, primarily because the area that we thought was right of way actually belonged to a private property owner. The chief did meet with the owners of the property last night, I believe.
Go ahead.
Tonight, no, just a few moments ago. And it sounds like they're very amenable. We were going to make some parking arrangement considerations for them in return for using their property, and so I'll be working with the city attorney's office to see if we can get an agreement formalized in the near future. The only other thing I just wanted to mention is just to remind the council that if there are any additional items regarding the budget, that we can provide additional data, please just shoot me an email and we'll try to turn that around as soon as possible.
Okay.
I'm not hearing anything.
That's because nothing's being said. We're very formal tonight. I think it's, we're a little even early, that's pretty good. Let's move into discussing the Recreation Department.
Maybe it's the mayor who hears the problems.
Yeah, there is the mayor. I'm sure he'll appreciate that.
We figured it out. Maybe we should get through this room, it's so much more fun.
You want to walk us through the materials?
This is why we love Tacoma Park, it's a perfect example.
If it gets too slip for you, you let me know. We can make it a little less formal.
I'm Deborah Hayden, I'm the Recreation Director, have been for the last 10 years. I have with me my Deputy Director, Gregory Clark, who's been with us for...
Four years.
Four years. And in the audience, we have Eric Roche, who is a manager for, I want to say, two years. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And we're very pleased to be here. We really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about what we do and what our plans are. But in particular, to hear what you're interested in, what's on your mind, your questions. So I'm only going to talk a little bit, and, and then I'd really like to hear what, like I said, what's on your mind. We have, as always, inundated you with paper and statistics, hello mayor. And so I'm not going to go through each sheet, I'm going to pick on some highlights to talk about. And then we have, I just want to make sure everyone got the orange sheet with the two extra bits of data for this evening. It highlights the teens and senior program. Okay. We have before you a document titled Department Priorities Related to the Strategic Plan. We have outlined several programs, program areas as they relate to the strategic plan, and we hope that we've touched on important areas in this document. I want to draw your attention to page two and talk a little bit about the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. As, as you know, it is funded in part by Montgomery County, and it is not a building that we own, it is owned by Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning. So it's actually a three-way partnership. Montgomery County Recreation has the contract with us to provide services. And the contribution from the county has been dwindling and is slated to be reduced again this year. So we're operating with smaller numbers, but I'm proud to say that over the last year and a half to two years, we've really turned, in my opinion, turned the facility around. And there's a chart on page two which shows you the revenue and activity for year-to-date. Now, we can only give you data through April, and we don't want to project out all the way to the end of the fiscal year. So this is essentially nine and a half months of data that we're providing in this entire document. And the reason I want to point this out to you, many of you are familiar with the new fitness equipment that we had installed in the, in the center. And if you look at membership revenue, last year it was $2,400, and this year, to this point, it is $4,765 in memberships. And we attribute that to a couple of things. One is the new equipment, and we think it's drawing a lot more people interested in cardio health. And also, more people are coming, more kids are coming, and they're also joining the center as a whole. So that's a number we're very happy with, and we anticipate those numbers will continue to grow. The big number here is program revenue. That means the revenue brought in by classes, basically classes, and as you can see, it's doubled from last year. And we're very proud to accept new, all the new customers we've had, but also, we're retaining more customers this year as well. And that's really a trend we're looking to continue. The number under that, rental revenue, you may say, well, look, our rental revenues are down, and they are, they're about half. But the reason for that is we're, there isn't that much time left in a day for people to rent the facility, because we have programs going on. And to be honest with you, in the past, we, we weren't able to fill the, the time, and so we thought, well, let's maximize our revenue, and we would rent the facility as much as we could. But we feel like this is really the point of the center, is to have more community programs, classes, to bring the neighborhood in, people who are invested in the neighborhood and into the recreation program. So, so this, this is not, this is not a number that I think should be looked at as a, as a bad trend, we're pretty happy with this. And the contractor revenues, we do have two major contractors, a dance troupe and a jazzercise troupe. And some of this, the difference in the number, it's a small difference, it's just about when people, when they pay us, and it's probably the end of the month that we'll get that. So we're pretty much on track. That's been a fairly steady number. And so as you can see, all in all, our revenues are increasing, but more importantly, participation is increasing in the facility. Does anyone have questions about that? Should we hold the questions till the end, or you want to do them while we're...
Just by adding the numbers comparison, is FY09, 2010, a full year, or is that nine months also, is it apples to apples?
Full year.
It's a full year.
Yes.
So it's actually nine months versus...
Twelve.
Twelve. So that would make the situation look even better.
Yes.
This says 2010 and 11, though.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's a full year.
It's a full year.
We did highlight volunteers, I know that's been on page three. We have, we've done this for the past three years to show how we're using volunteers and how much we rely on volunteers for our programs. Safe to say, there are so many things we would not be doing if we, it was only paid staff. And we've been most grateful for the way people have been stepping up, particularly in the senior program. It's amazing how many people come to us and say, I want to teach a yoga class, and I don't want to be paid. And the seniors love this, of course, because it's free, and it's convenient, and it's during the day, and they can take the bus here, or drive here, or walk here. But, but that's just one example. You know about the basketball program and how many, you know, youth we had involved, and how many coaches it takes to run such a thing. But, but I have some numbers here. From FY09, we had 3,851 hours of volunteers, and this year, we have 4,600 hours. And so you can see, we're really taking advantage of the opportunities to expand our programs without really costing residents more money. So we're very grateful to our volunteers. And, and really, it's across all programs, it's not just the seniors. We have them for special events, and we have a special focus on teens and, and getting them to learn the value of volunteering. And so we have several programs where kids get involved in community service, and so we count those as our volunteer hours as well.
Could you say if the number was last year, you had a comparison?
Two years ago, was 3851 hours. Last year was 4417 hours. And now we're up to 4687.
And again, just in the nine and a half months.
I'm sorry?
And, and this figure is the...
Yes.
Nine and a half months, the other ones were full year.
Right. I just want to ask you to take your pen out, and on page four, under Sport and Fitness, because I missed a very important program, and I promised my rec committee, I would say, and that is our wiffle ball program, which last summer had 60 people, and we're counting little kids, little teeny kids, as people. They were all ages, and it was really great to see out on Lee Jordan Field. And we are planning to hold that program again, thanks to the Recreation Committee. So, as you can see, Sport and Fitness, we're getting a lot of people interested in their health, and we're promoting community, actually, in, in our sports programs, because so many people meet people and, you know, make new friends. So, so it's, there's just so many benefits that I know I don't have to tell you about with, with sports. On the same page, we talk about our morning and afternoon edition, which is our aftercare program, which is responsible for most of the nice art that you see in this room. It's a little spotty tonight, but we've had some really great decorations. And so this is the home base for the program. We're very pleased to say that it's been full this year, for the whole year, and, and our morning program also had a very, 100% increase. Now, we attribute some of that to the fact that the elementary school wasn't here last year, and so now they're back. And so, we'd like to say we're so great that 100% increase was due to that, which it is, of course, but, so, so we're really happy with the trend here. And I, I just can't say enough how important this center is to this program. Because we used to be in the schools across the street, which was great, we had the gym and a very large space. But here, I think the reason that we have a successful program is because there's so much to do here. We have art programs, dance, music, we use the auditorium, we still use the park, and we still use the gym. But kids can sign up for programs, for clubs, and their parents realize that to come here after school, there's going to be an enrichment opportunity and experience for their child, which a lot of the other daycare, aftercare programs don't have. So I think people are finally realizing that this is probably the best program in the area. And I say that with some humility, that it's taken some time, but, but we've built a very strong program, and we're very proud of that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I'm just curious, with the success of these programs, and I'm very proud of it, to what extent are we able to know how many of the participants are from within Tacoma Park proper, from, you know, people that literally live here as distinguished from those who live nearby? Is there any way of sort of tracking that, or do you do that?
We, we can, and we do. We didn't do it for this, for every program that we laid out here, but, do you have a packet with you, or do you have access to a packet?
No, I have it online.
Okay. Because we do have attachment number three, and this, this talks about active net accounts. So those are people who sign up via the internet to participate in our programs. And once you establish an account, you can come into the office and sign up, or you can do it online. And this year, I'm sorry, this is since 2009, we're tracking how many people are using active nets since its inception. And the people who have accounts, now, I want to stress, this doesn't mean all the participants in all of our programs, because we do have drop-in programs, and we do have programs where you don't necessarily have to have an account to participate in. So we have a much larger number of participants, these are just account holders, and 49% of the account holders are non-residents.
Wow, that's a lot.
But, it is a lot. But again, I don't think that we get as many non-residents in our, in our more casual drop-in setting. So I hope that answers your question.
Sure.
That number does change from year to year. I believe last year, it was something along the order of 40%, so it does fluctuate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I did want to go to page six, which talks again about active net. Now, we came to you a couple of years ago and said, the people in this community want credit cards, they want the ability to pay, they want the convenience, and we're finding, just not even two years later, we have a chart here with a comparison, just from last year to this year, how, now, these are only until April. We did, we did choose a defined date from July to April. The difference is, last year, our budget hearing was later, so we, we had later data up to the end of April. You can see that the number of transactions that happen with credit cards has almost doubled from last year, and, and so has the activity, the revenue and the number of transactions. We are getting so many more customers in this department. Last year, at this point, there was $243,000 in revenue, and, and today, there's $341,000. And you can see, that's a huge increase. Now, we can say so many reasons for that. We have great, fabulous programs. I think the reputation of the Recreation Department has improved over the last several years. I think the convenience of using the credit card can, can account for some of the increase. Who knows if the, you know, we never know how the economy impacts these things, you would think, well, people want to be closer to home, so they sign up for programs in their area, we have affordable programs. I mean, there's, there's a lot of reasons, but we think the increased activity, the sheer volume of new customers and returning customers accounts for, for this huge increase in revenue, and we're very happy with it. I did want to just refer to, I know there's been a lot of questions about our teen program, so on, in the orange cover sheet, there is an addenda, addendum called Tacoma Park Recreation Teen Program. And we highlight a few programs, the Teen Job Bank, the Talent Show, and Teens on the Move. These are attempts to bring kids into our department to try and get to know them, to be social, to get them to trust us. And then we have the various programs which we list on the bottom. And as you can see, the, the number next to the, to the activity indicates how many times we held that program during the year. So we have a lot of, a lot of programs and hits and kids being involved. And we have a new program at the Recreation Center where they do a teen night twice a month, that's been drawing 25 kids a night, and that's been a huge increase in participation. So, all in all, we feel like it's been, it's been a very successful year, and we're trending upward in, in almost every indicator, and we're very happy with the response we've been getting, and the compliments from the community, and the, just overall participation rate. People are interested in their health and building community and getting to know their neighbors. And our seniors are just our biggest fans. I can't tell you how many letters I get from the seniors, and it's very gratifying to all of us, because seniors take time to write nice letters, and we try to pass them on when we get them. But that's really all I have to say, and Gregory and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Just on that last page, can you say anymore about the Teen Job Bank?
Want to talk about?
That seemed to me like a, something that was sorely needed for a long time, and there may have been a little fits and starts a number of years ago, but how well is that doing, how long's that been going?
The Teen Job Bank actually started this past winter. It started off with snow removal, you know, when it was snowing outside, and it was very successful. Approximately nine young people took part in that activity during the initial phase. Since, the Job Bank is now moving on to yard work, car washing, grass cutting, those sorts of odd jobs. Fay is actually coordinating that, and she's enlisted several community members that express an interest in getting teens over to perform odd jobs. And the teens that participate, or that we actually send out to residents' homes, attend a two-hour workshop that the Recreation Department gives, just to make sure that they are properly equipped to make, to speak correctly, know how to negotiate their fee and things of that nature, make sure that they do a good job. Once the teen has completed the job, we send a, an evaluation to the resident, asking several questions as far as the work ethic of the teen, were they nice and polite, did they do, properly do the work, and of course, are they interested in receiving more services? And we take those evaluations, we discuss it with the teen, and then we... And we take those evaluations, we discuss it with the teen, and then we try and connect that teen with another resident once the jobs actually come in. So Fay will be, pretty soon, she'll be asking for residents to send her odd jobs that, if they're interested in receiving a teen for, she'll be advertising through the newsletter, as well as the SNI report.
Good, thanks.
And just to add one thing, the resident pays the teen directly for the work. And my understanding is the snow shoveler's made out very well.
Very well, very well.
So everybody was happy?
Seems that way.
So just so I understand, how's that logistic work? Someone sends the request for the job to Fay?
Yes.
And then she, is that posted somewhere for the teen?
Well, she contacts the teens, the ones that receive. Of course, if you receive a favorable evaluation, you'll be contacted first to find out if you're interested in performing that job.
But there's not like, it's not like an online job bank?
No, it's not online, no. Fay actually collects the jobs and matches the teens to the job. She contacts the teens in communication with the teen, as well as the resident that would like to have the job performed.
Other experience? Any questions?
Are we doing, are they done with their presentation?
Yes.
Well, then I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. So it sounds like Fay's doing a lot of things.
She's a very busy woman.
So I was going to ask if more advertising for the Teen Job Bank would help, but it sounds like you have a plan to expand your advertising, because I haven't heard much about it in the community. Is the field behind Piney Branch going to be ready by fall?
Are you going to hold me to my answer?
I won't hold you responsible for the outcome. I'd like your best estimate.
My best estimate? They've had a lot of rain, I know that. Suzanne was in a meeting today, I don't know if they gave any kind of schedule update.
Not for the, not for that portion.
I would be surprised if it was ready in the fall, because, you know, it, yeah, because the schedules, they haven't really started on schedule. Now, there is possibility they could make up time, but with the rain, and I wouldn't put money in it.
With the initial schedule, the work was supposed to start in November. It was postponed until March.
Well, I'm aware of all that. So if you have some information, I would be curious to know what is going to be ready, and
We can find out.
When, and in particular, of course, the Folk Festival uses the field on September 11th for their activities, because we use some of the parking lot area. So I'm curious to know whether or not that's going to be available, because they promised me that it would be available, but I won't hold you responsible for that either.
Right, I didn't make that promise.
So you're doing a lot of things with volunteers, and I know that the Housing Community Development Office is doing a lot of things with volunteers, and maybe the library's doing some things with volunteers, and I don't know how much the police department's doing with volunteers right now. Pretty functional or useful to have a volunteer coordinator to assist with these activities? Or do you feel like?
I can't speak for the other departments. I know for us, we, well, we really like the opportunity to connect with the volunteers themselves, and when they, for us to either seek them out, or that they seek us out, we're really one-on-one, we can say exactly what we need. It almost feels like an extra step to me, to have a coordinator. And again, I'm always speaking for our department, and I think it works pretty well, and we get a chance to really get to know our volunteers and see them every day. And I would defer, you know, if it was, if everyone agreed, it would be helpful, but I wouldn't say I'd fall on a sword for it.
Okay, well, that's good. The library seems to have some interesting resources, sort of in the area in between the library and the community center with, I saw the new Mac, the new Mac lab that was there, and I know before there was a bunch of music equipment in there, and I'm not sure.
Well, we call that Gregory's Room, actually. He's responsible for the Mac lab. You want to talk about it a little bit?
Well, I'd be interested to see some more collaboration and use of young people with those resources that are available, because I go there and I always see the empty equipment, and it seems like you guys have the bodies that could help fill and connect with that equipment, and I'm not always sure who controls. I know that they're in between the library and the, I don't know who owns what equipment or what use of them, but just as a general comment, it would be great to see some more collaboration and some more use of those facilities.
We do have a flex program.
Yes, currently, we do have quite a few programs. We've also offered free workshops, and I'll briefly describe the programs. We have running right now, beginning, intermediate, and advanced video editing with Final Cut Pro for teens and adults. We offer music production classes and workshops. Right now, it's just workshops, free workshops for kids that are there. I actually just received a proposal from someone in the music industry that would like to hold more in-depth music production classes, to include music production for guitar soloists or piano soloists, things of that nature. We also have, hold workshops and learn to DJ for young people that are in the room. Workshops and programs right now, the workshops actually take place from roughly from 3:30 to 5 o'clock PM Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the classes begin, the classes are Tuesdays, Wednesday, and Thursday from 6 to roughly 8 o'clock PM. Some classes are, you may have two classes on in the evening, and other days that are just one class during the day. I have spoken with library staff to develop more classes for young people. I am, was in communication with Phil Shapiro, and we were trying to put together a video production class for folks that speak a language from Ethiopian, I can't pronounce it right now.
Har.
At Har, yes. We were thinking of putting that, we were trying to put that together. He has a young person that's interested in teaching it, so we're actually in the process of working that out. So more classes are coming, more free workshops are coming as well. And we're also going to add in studio time for those that actually participate in class that don't have Macs at home, so they can come and just work on their projects right here in the city.
Looks like it also might be an opportunity to make some money during the day. We might have adults in there that might lease it for courses, where you don't have to do all the work, you could just lease the facility and get some income off of it. I'll leave that one alone. Youth jobs, I like the youth job connection, and was kind of interested if we could use any of our public safety money or things to actually create more youth jobs, either helping, assisting with some of the leaf removal, or snow shoveling, or things like that, in terms of just intervention programs for folks. Leave that one alone. I've been talking to the Minister of the Presbyterian Church about this kitchen that they have there, and they said that you were actually interested in it, if it could get licensed as a commercial kitchen, and I'm actually really interested in that. I asked one of our local architects to help identify someone who might go and evaluate the kitchen, and I would be interested at some time in seeing more information about how we might create a partnership there. Did some really interesting stuff when I was in AmeriCorps and working in San Francisco, where we developed a youth business called Urban Herbals, where the kids bottled, you know, the white wine vinegars with herbs, and they made labels, and they did, it was really great, because kids got to sell the stuff, kids were involved in production, kids were involved in marketing, you know, there are all of the different components of the business, and the kids could rotate through those portions of it, and really learn how to develop a business, and it was really interesting. And I imagine that there's a lot of cooking classes, and all kinds of other things that would be interesting to do with a commercial kitchen. And I know we talked about having one here, and it didn't, we didn't end up having a kitchen here in the facility, but it's there, and it's not really utilized, and just, you know, we have a partnership with the county around the Tacoma Park Recreation Center site, and it'd be interesting to see what we could do around partnership with that facility. I really appreciated the basketball league information, got a lot better this year. All the information wasn't up all at the same time, the boys' schedules got up faster than the girls' schedules did, but I imagine that it'll all catch up in the future. Couple more things. The active net registration, it's great to be able to pay by credit card. It's not the world's greatest system. I know that, you know, we bought it, and it's fee-based, but there are other systems that are just more user-friendly than going through the active net process. I still have yet to be able to pay for Pipers Before Care on the active net system. I can never get it to load in, and always have to come in and pay at the desk here, because I can't get it to show up in the process. So, I don't know if that's a glitch that's special for me, but
Yes, we programmed it that way.
You programmed it that way? You're after me, I knew it.
We wanted to see you more, we wanted you to come see it. I can look into that.
I'm sure you did. This happened every time, and I talked to them about it, and so, but active net is just, you know, it's just, I've seen other things out there that are better than that, and it's probably not a top priority now, because at least people can pay by credit card, but, you know, the next time we're out at the recreation, wherever the recreation folks go to find out about new software, I think that we could probably do better than that. And the last thing I would say is that, we have all this multimedia stuff happening, and we have the community center, and we have all the stuff down here. I would like to see us provide more access to the community for that kind of programming, and I don't know if that happens in the library, or it happens in the Recreation Department, or it happens through the Communications Center, or it happens with all of those folks working together. But it's this great tool that we have, and I would love to see, you know, community, like community cable access. I'm not really looking for Wayne's World, but, you know, some smart talk, and kids, you know, kids that might do some programming and activities, I think would be really interesting and a great place for us to go with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm also supportive of the idea that Councilmember Clay suggested around seeing if we could use some of the public safety funds to particularly around job-related things for teens. I was interested in the Attachment Three, under the age of the program participants, and I guess that, is that only people who come into active net, or is that everybody?
Yes, that's, and that's why it's a little misleading. So any child or adult who participated, well, say, kids who come to the game room, for example, if they have a membership, they would show up, but a lot of kids walk in.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably not exact, but I wonder if it might be directionally correct in terms of just, I'm a little concerned about the 13- to 20-year age range, and how good a job we're doing at engaging that population. And I think it's connected to something the chief might talk to us about, which is, you know, there are, there is increased gang activity in the community, and that is the population is often most engaged in gangs. So just interested to hear your perspective on whether you think we're kind of serving that population well, what we could do to serve that population better, what we could do if you did have access to public safety money to conduct some sort of job engagement program, or other ideas you have.
Well, I will say, that is a very misleading number. We talked about it today, all the programs that we named that kids participate in, that wouldn't be reflected here, and that would be like our man-up mentoring program, a lot of these, you don't, you know, you don't have to enroll. And one thing we found out about teens is they really do not like red tape, paperwork, signing up in advance, nothing like that. It's last minute, I want to go, and we're really trying, because, you know, we do have requirements for waivers.
Permission slips.
Permission slips. You know, sometimes we get caught up in our own red tape, but it, this is why we don't even try to get them an active net account, because that would be just, but, so that number, the number of kids we're reaching is much greater than what shows up in active net. But Councilmember Wright, we spend a lot of time as a department, not just Fay, we talk about how to attract teens, how to keep teens, how to motivate them, how to get them to come to our programs, and I say it every year, it's a challenge, and we love them to death, but what we know is that at least the kids we're working with are really not fond of making a commitment in advance, and so we've sort of had to tailor our programs to sort of be, you know, here's what's going on, you know, you want to do this. And in terms of getting kids to show up, you know, we have this Community Service Week, and they come five days, we're very proud of them, you know, we work hard to get them to come back, but I would say that's more rare than, more the exception than the rule about, you know, I know, I've heard a lot of feedback from the community, and adults such as myself think, well, this would be something that would be really great for kids, and if they came, and if they did this for eight weeks, and my ideas, and we listen to the kids, and what they, what we found out is they really are looking to us to guide them, to tell, kind of tell them what to do. It's odd, we think, oh, they have all these great ideas that they want to do. Well, we hear a couple, like, we want to go to New York City and go shopping. It's like, okay. You know what I'm saying? That it's been, it's been a challenge to find the thing, the hook, that's going to get the kids to come back and make that commitment. And we do, you know, you can see a lot of our programs are kind of one-hit wonders, or once a month, we seem to have more success with those kind of programs. But we are, we are open and willing to do, apart from going to New York shopping, I think, most anything that the kids want to do. They're definitely leaning toward danger, excitement, you know, trendy, expensive kinds of things, and, you know, that can be a challenge too for us.
Do you hear, because when I ran a youth program in New Haven, which kids were in the program seven to 13, and then 13 beyond, you start to become counselors, and when they hit that kind of 13, 14 age, funds became an issue, they wanted to have ways to earn money. So do you hear that about interest in job opportunities, or is that like a reoccurring theme?
Yes, we've heard, we've heard interest in jobs. That's why we actually created the Job Bank in partnership with the Recreation Council Committee. We've also taken kids to job fair recently, actually held mock interviews, again, in partnership with the Recreation Committee. So we're trying some things in terms of finding kids' jobs, trying to take them to job fairs, even college fairs, things of that nature. And you actually mentioned use of the public safety funds to actually fund jobs for teens, and the Recreation Committee looked into that, and there was a liability issue with insurance, and kids using the heavy equipment and machinery, and things of that nature. So that was actually looked into, and let's say with some governmental OSHA things that would prohibit something like that, make it expensive for them.
Of course, if we had the chief's money, we'd be okay, wouldn't we, chief?
It's not my money!
I mean, when we're talking about it, you know, the speed camera money is money that's broadly available for public safety. And so, yeah, I mean, I hear that, but there's lots of city, and Colleen probably knows more about this than I do.
Cities do this all over.
Yeah, there's lots of cities, maybe they're larger cities, so they have more of an infrastructure, but I could imagine things like, I guess maybe there's not lots of leaf raking needed in the summertime, but rakes don't surprise, strike me as like heavy equipment, right? So is there something, are there activities that they could do that would definitely be beneficial to the city and its residents, and also something that we could that we could pay them to do?
Well, we haven't had that conversation with Public Works or, I mean, we can certainly start these conversations, but we haven't, we have not thought along those lines to this point.
So, I'm not sure everyone, I don't want to speak for the council, but I, you know, I think we're always open to ideas. And if that camera does go up on, the new camera goes up, there's likely to be more funds than we have anticipated in the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to offer my support to what Councilmember Wright was just suggesting, and also to Councilmember Clay's comments earlier. I think they've covered the items that I had in mind to talk about tonight. So, rather than prolong the meeting, I'll just say, yes, I agree. Anything else?
I have one more.
I may not agree with this.
I think you might. So, last week, I, you weren't here last week, but last week I mentioned at the meeting that at the art hop, I ran into Alice Sims and Fritzi, her last name, I can't remember. And we talked about the six panels that the younger kids made, which are the ones that haven't, haven't been put up in the community center. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Mosaic?
Yeah, the mosaic panels. And would like to find a place for those panels. The ESOL panels are up over the doorway that are over there. And they say they've been trying to work with the city to get these panels installed, but they have been unsuccessful. And I don't know what the other council members think, but I would certainly like them to be successful at getting, they're about, each of them is about this big, and they're very nice. And the kids that worked on them would like to see them up.
Just have one other comment. I do want to say, actually, I very much appreciate that over the last two years, I feel like you've listened to the council much more in terms of our interest in recreation, our direction about using volunteers more. And, you know, some of the numbers bear that out in the report. Also, the, you know, people being able to pay by credit card, you've made that happen, and you can see that that's at least partially responsible for some additional financial activity. It's probably also that the programming is even better than ever. So, I just want to thank you for listening and taking our input and acting upon it. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
That's right.
My turn?
Forgot that.
Yes. Oh, okay. Please understand from my perspective that, that between the voices that I hear on my telephone and the picture I see on my computer screen is about a 70, a 7-0 second delay. So, the TV screen here is not really useful, because sometimes I have to, can't even guess who it is that's actually speaking. And that's why I'm a little sometimes not sure when I'm, when my turn is up. I did have one, a couple questions, and that is with regards to the supplement, supplemental or additional, a new information item, where you list all the, a number of teen recreation programs, trips, special events. I'm just curious, is that, is, how do, I mean, there's a large number of them. It looks like there's probably 40, maybe, or 35 altogether listed here. I guess, yeah. And some of these are repeated a number of times and some, once or twice, you know, like a King, trip to King's Dominion, obviously, that's going to be a naturally rare event, as far as should be, given the cost and staffing that involved in something like that. So, my question really is, are some of these listed only once or twice because you tried a program and found that it really was, did not prove to be satisfactory, and therefore, in terms of attendance or enthusiasm of the participants or whatever other criteria? Or is it simply because some programs don't get repeated for, just because there's other variables that you have to take into account? In other words, by looking at this list of about 40 some odd programs, it's really not possible to tell which of these, in your opinion, you would consider to be successful or popular programs as opposed to ones that were kind of like, well, it was a good idea, we tried it, but it didn't work. So, I was wondering if you could give me some guidance, feedback on that?
Yeah, I think that there are several factors in looking at this list for the number of occurrences per program. Of course, fee for the program is always a major factor. Most of the programs that have a one beside them are large programs, seasonal programs, things of that nature. But we do take into account when we are programming for teens, the success of the program prior to the occasion, prior to the program that we just had. So, we think about that. We think about, we ask the kids on most programs, you know, what did they like, what didn't they like, and what did they want to do? So, those are a few of the factors that we actually use when programming for teens. So, some things we can do more than others because they're low cost, very, very little extra staff needed to actually put on the program. But most of the programs with a one beside it are usually high-cost programs or programs that take a lot of staff, input, and supervision in order to do.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of assumed that that was part of the equation. But I would imagine that are there not some programs that fall in the other category where they've tried once and it turns out, you know, that in your opinion or the kid's opinion, that it's just not going to work very well, or it's just for whatever reason, which is okay. Not, I don't mean it as a criticism. In fact, it's a compliment, because you're willing to try things and, you know, constantly experiment, always looking for, you know, optimizing what you're doing. I mean, do you have some that's kind of fall into that category?
Yes, yes. There are programs on here that fall into that category. The paddle boating was one of the programs that actually fell into that category. We, we actually went and took, took a group of teens, but they didn't want to go back. They got out there and figured out that paddle boating was a lot of work, especially when you're on the Potomac. The Sligo Creek Scarringer Hunt was another program that was, didn't have quite the attendance that we actually expected. So, there are a few programs on here that are like that. The Make Your Own Omelet Program, initially, the program had a good number of young people that participated, and the participation dwindled the second time that we did it. So, there are, there are some programs on here where the participation fluxes from program to program.
The next question I have is with regard to these kind of programs, some of them are probably oversubscribed. In other words, that every time you can run it, you can probably count on, you know, a full enrollment, you know, all the slots being full. And then, and then I, if that's the case, as I assume it may be from time to time, I think, I think, you know, like Man Up Youth Mentoring has a lot of them. Teen Night is another one that's got 14 occasions on it. What do you, what do you do in those kind of situations where you just realize that it's just, it's almost too popular, or you wish you could do it more, but you just simply cannot? I mean, have examples of that?
Well, and speaking of those two programs, the Man Up Youth Mentoring Program, that program takes place weekly. That's why it's the high number of occasions that you see here, as well as the Recreation Center Teen Night. That program actually takes place bimonthly, so it takes place twice a month. Both programs have varying activities, a variety of activities and programs that take place within those programs. For instance, the Man Up Program, kids go to the movies, they go to art showings, they actually, we rent the gym at Piney Branch Elementary for the guys. They actually have discussions in the teen lounge. So, they do a variety of activities. They've gone to the batting cage, as well as the teen program that takes place at the Recreation Center that's bimonthly. They have a variety of activities that they do. It's not just one particular thing that they actually do on those programs.
I'd like to add...
Are any of the programs here what you would call oversubscribed? In other words, you have to say to some kids, look, you know, this is all we can take right now?
I was just going to add that the trips usually, we may have to turn a kid or two away. Mostly, that refers back to what I said earlier, where they wait till the very, very last minute. And while the bus is pulling up, they run up and say, can I go? And at that point, you know, maybe 15 minutes earlier, a kid took the last spot. So, we do fill our trips quite often, roller skating, laser tag, King's Dominion, very popular. And so, we will do those again. And there is a factor too with teenagers, you can overkill something. If you did it every week, you know, it'd be popular the first three weeks, but by the fourth week, it loses its luster. So, we try to space out the popular programs too, to pique the interest of the participants.
The last question I have is sort of still geared to the same train of thought, and that is, is whether or not it makes any sense to be, for your office to, or programs to discriminate between Tacoma Park and non-Tacoma Park participants in programs, whether they're teen programs or senior programs or others, because of the risk of oversubscription. Because it seems to me that if that, if there is a situation, whatever the program is, is that it would be a shame that kids of Tacoma Park residents would lose out simply because residents, kids from, or it could be seniors as well, are filling up slots who are non-Tacoma Park residents. And I don't know if you want to come or react to that or not.
I would say that that doesn't happen very often. The non-residents that participate, particularly with the youth, a lot of them are friends from school. And so, you know, they may live right over the line. We do have an emphasis on our youth programs, our teens, for residents. We don't like to turn kids away, but if it's a special program, we will, we will give preference to residents. With the seniors, not so much. We feel like the non-residents, well, not with the seniors, but the paying programs, a lot of times the resident, the non-residents will fill out a class and fill it up, which is what we want. We, you know, we want to have full programs. So, it's not always just the residents who are going to fill a class. So, I don't get the sense that we're turning away residents. I would say that that would be a rare occasion.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your help on all of this. Appreciate it.
Okay. I think we've...
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thanks. We'll take a short break, and we'll come back for police and library. And the police are here to take us all away.
First, I want to introduce my staff that's with us here tonight. Deputy Chief Captain Horsey, Lieutenant Collington in charge of CID, Kathy Plevy, our PIO, an executive assistant, and Lieutenant Rick Bowers in charge of operations, which is Patrol Division. I will be brief, as we reported to you several weeks ago on the Department and our annuals report.
Shall we hold our breath?
No. This year's budget is basically the same as last year's, with no new programs or personnel. We've maintained our level of service. The increase is from personnel costs, which obviously go up each year. Our goal this year is to continue to maintain our reduction in crime with an emphasis on burglies and auto thefts. We will continue to emphasize selective traffic enforcement by our officers throughout the city. We will continue the speed camera with the obvious goal of reducing speed. We will continue to use CompStat to analyze crime patterns and will once again present it to the public, which we intend to do in May. We intend to partner with the Cable Office to prevent, present more outreach programs on crime and crime prevention this year on cable. Lieutenant Collington has proposed several programs which she'll be working on, which will be of no cost at this point. In continuing the theme of being green, we will continue to purchase hybrid vehicles for command staff in our CID. And I am also looking at the research on hybrids for patrol, which I will report on later this year once we get some more data. It's still something that's obviously being looked at, and the cost is one of the things that we're looking at also for that. We will continue to put a major emphasis on patrol officers getting out of their cars more and interacting with our residents. The bikes will also be utilized in areas where our presence of an officer would be welcome. We will continue to look for more ways to inform our residents on our activities and the crime in our city. We believe by partnering together, we continue to make a difference in the quality of life, even in these tough financial times. I will welcome your questions and comments.
Questions?
All right, I'll ask questions. You can't, you can't leave without any questions.
I know.
Well, that would be a first.
I know, but I'm not that nice. So, I'm working at home two days a week now. And one of the places that I work from is upstairs in my bedroom, which has a window that looks on, guess what it looks on?
Circle?
It looks out on the...
Elman link.
Circle. And every morning, people come backwards through the circle. Would be a prime opportunity to catch people if you came in the morning between seven and nine, and in the evenings between, I'd say, 4:30 to seven. And then it kind of dies off until midnight. And I'm not as concerned about the midnight people because they're unlikely to squash small children.
What happens is, we've done that periodically, as obviously from your calls to us. We go out there, we write a few tickets the first couple of days, and then it dries up. So, periodically, we do go back there. Michelle has been very active in that area also.
I know. She wrote me a ticket for the flat tire on my motorcycle while she was out looking at people coming around the circle, while I was on vacation.
We will continue to monitor that area and take selective enforcement, Councilmember Wright.
In case anyone thinks the council members get any special treatment, it is not the case. All right.
You got the ticket.
I didn't get the ticket. Oh, yeah. I had to tape them to the windows on the motorcycles. They get blown away. I didn't find out about it until they were ready to tow it. So...
That was a warning.
It was very nice of you. I appreciate that. But yeah, it's, it's a continuing issue, and it's just particularly bad in the commute hours, which, you know, you said before that there are people going through the neighborhood, but they're really, they're heading on down Lincoln over to the Maple Avenue corridor is where they're going. So, thank you.
They're going by my house.
They're also going by your house. However, they're not going backwards on the street when they go by your house.
Yeah, they just flip upside down.
I saw that. That was, that was challenging, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Wright? Couple things. One is, I was curious, I joked about the Fusion Center in my opening comments, but you did have a proposal to us the last time you reported, and you were going to kind of look at it more and get back to us. Just wanted to...
What I've done, as I gave the city managers I walked in tonight, an update briefing on it. I wanted her to take a look at it, and then probably will be sent to you all to look at, and before we have any further discussion. I'd rather you have a look at it.
Great.
Because it is, some stuff in there is confidential.
Great.
But I got a briefing paper, which, as I said, I wanted to be able to get more information. I wasn't satisfied... I wasn't satisfied, and I, we spoke about it, it's almost like, she read my mind, I read hers, Saturday afternoon, she asked me where we were on it, and I said, "I have something I will bring to you tonight." So she's gonna look at it and make a decision whether it will help you all in making a decision, or whether we want to go any further with it.
Okay, great. The other question I had was, in the budget, we are proposing using some speed camera money to continue to pay for an officer, I think, to participate in the gang task force, because a federal grant will run out during the course of the year.
It appears it'll run out, but we haven't given up yet.
Right, yeah, we haven't given up. And I just wanted to see if you could maybe reiterate the importance of that, or your feeling about the participation.
Well, the gang task force, as you know in our briefing, has been very important here to the city. The gang problems have obviously increased throughout Montgomery County, which is obviously disturbing to all of us. We have a concern for some of the violence that's been associated with the gang activity. Unfortunately, we have two gangs here. I will not mention their names tonight, because I'm not gonna give them that recognition. We have two gangs here in the city who have now moved into high positions here, causing problems here in Montgomery County, in the city of Tacoma Park. Our task force has been very successful, because when they come into Tacoma Park, which they do, which is a part of being in the grant, we get the pleasure of having 11 officers from the gang task force working down here, which is an added addition to our citizens and gives them extra protection on this issue. And when we have a gang issue, the entire unit does respond, along with Detective Holtz, which has been excellent, and we've started a program, which I think we mentioned behind closed doors, but we've now went public with it. When a child is identified in a gang now, the information's brought to my attention. I send a letter to the parents, letting them know how we've come in contact with them. We send them a letter with where they can go to get help, and they can contact us, and we've had one successful case already, where the mother brought the child in, and we talked to the kid, and found out how we could help them, and the family's been very satisfied with what the gang task force is doing. As I told you in the beginning, part of the task force is trying to help these kids and rehabilitate them, and I think it's working well. But the gang issue is serious, continues to be serious, and we're gonna continue. That's why we want to keep this gang task force in place, and with the assistance of the county, it's working very well for us.
Do you have a perspective on what was talked about during the Recreation briefing related to the value of potentially using public safety dollars if we had them available for job programs related to teens, or particularly at the age where they might be most attracted to enter gangs?
My understanding of the speed fund is that those funds couldn't be used for that.
Do you know something about the law that says beyond public safety broadly?
Well, it is, I'm talking about public, you're talking about speed camera?
Yeah, but wouldn't you, would you say that there would be value in having a teen's job program that targeted youth that were particularly susceptible to be in gangs? That that might be helpful in preventing them from entering gangs, and therefore would be, A, firstly, the question, do you think there's validity in that approach? And then B, is that, do you think that's use of public safety?
I think there's, the problem's there, and I think there's validity in putting funds towards it. I don't think the speed camera funds could be used towards that. I think that's taking a stretch. I haven't seen them used that way in any other, based on the interpretation, and I think I know the law as well, but I would defer to the city manager on that.
I mean, all the law says is we can use it for public safety. That's all it says. It doesn't say anything else.
The desk room?
Nope, it says that. It says "public safety." That's all it says. That's all it says.
It seems like an appropriate question for the city attorney.
As the council, where the city attorney did do a legal opinion on this issue, we had posed a number of possible programming that the council seemed to have interest in. I don't remember what their thought was on that specific issue, but we can certainly rescind that legal opinion back out.
Great. Second, I just wanted to see if you had any additional comments or thoughts around the burglary issue, because it is, does continue-
Well, actually, the burglaries are down. The burglaries that have been occurring in the city recently have been in apartment project out on New Hampshire Avenue. Residential houses is down. We have one, we have one on Eastern Avenue this week. But they've gone down since we've put an increased emphasis, and we are working, the apartment ones, very closely. But right now, and I'm hoping it remains that way, it seems to have stopped, other than the one we had on Eastern last week.
There was one, and maybe the person didn't report it, but my understanding is there's one on Maple Avenue today, in the 7300 block.
No.
So I'll make sure that I get what-
Have reported it as of now.
Okay.
Might have been intercepted.
Yeah, no, I think it was between like, 2 and 4, something like that, so maybe it's not, hasn't been reported. Well, that's good to hear, just because I saw that that happened, and-
Actually, we went three weeks with no residential other than the apartments, and then we had one on Eastern last week. If there's one on Maple Day, I obviously haven't been, got the notification yet, but we have our tactical enforcement unit and our detectives, patrol, we're really hitting the residential areas during the day, in an effort to reduce them, and that, as you obviously heard me say, that's one of my prime, that's my primary goal this year, residential burglaries.
Great, well, I appreciate all the efforts, and I appreciate you continuing to look in the option, into options around hybrid vehicles for patrol.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know that, first of all, I appreciate the work that the gang task force is doing, and I know they have been active in our neighborhood.
Very active.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I'll leave it at that. And, but, you know, I heard you tonight talk about that you're really proposing a budget that kind of stays the same as last year, and we also heard tonight from Ms. Hayden that you have a lot of money.
Thank you so much for having my back.
But I would be curious to hear that, were you not so wealthy? Where would you be recommending cuts? In other words, if we did have to trim some from the police budget, what recommendation would you be making?
I think I'll rule that out of order.
Well, I-
That's a hard-
Uh-huh.
Well, I think the first thing you gotta look at would be personnel, because that's your biggest cost. I mean, I'm doing budgets in the past, and obviously I've done budgets in several departments. You first look at personnel, then you look at some of your basic programs you do, which you would cut back on. You know, I think that would be the first thing to look at, would be personnel, and when you reduce personnel, you reduce what you could do.
Okay. I know that-
If I can talk also briefly about the special revenue fund, and kind of the long-term picture there, there are three basic areas that we get funds from that are reflected in the special revenue fund. One is some Homeland Security grants, which tend to be narrowly applicable, you can buy equipment off of a particular list.
Right.
And those are fairly small grants. The other grants are the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grants, the BURN Grants, and that's almost an annual grant, although we sit at about the bottom edge of that funding, and there's, in fact, been years where we fell off that bottom edge and didn't get an award. In recent years, we've been using those funds to cover a position that we had before, and that's the research and planning position. Prior to that, we, as far as I can remember, we never used it for personnel, for personnel costs. And then the other grant that we have in the special revenue fund this year is covering a quarter of that gang officer's salary. The problem kind of with the special revenue fund, getting them to appear in these, in the city's budget, is the federal government works on a different schedule, so you don't know about these monies until after we've gone through the budget process. But if we're paying attention, I guess, to what the federal government is doing, it looks like some of this money may be drying up.
Exactly, and that's- Well, what I would say to you is, you have to look at where we came from. We were not at full strength for many years here. And the goal you all had when I got here was, get full strength. Second goal was, to make us more outgoing in the public and to reduce crime. We've reduced crime four straight years.
I'm not in any way saying that-
No, I know, I'm just trying-
You haven't done a good job. I think you've done a great job, but I also think that-
Well, what I would tell you is, when you cut back, you're gonna cut back on some of the results you get. That's obvious in any, whether it's police, recreation, or public work. When you cut back funds or people, then you can't do as much as you've been doing. And I think we've done a good job with what we've had, staying at full strength, maximizing what we can provide to the public, and I think it's made a difference. We cut, you have to cut people, because that's really the biggest expense, when you talk about reducing a budget in a police department. And when you reduce people, you reduce what we could do. And we would look at the programs, what we could reduce, and how it would affect the public.
And what percent of your budget is people?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
Okay, I think, you know, one that comes to mind to me is the person who was the accreditation officer, and then we stopped accreditation and went into the research and planning-
He's the policy research manager. What he does is, basically what we did in accreditation, we have to look at all our policies to ensure that they're up to date, that we're not liable. There's changes every day in policies. One of the goals we have this year is, I want to have every policy, I've done probably close to half right now, since I've been here. They've been reviewed and updated, like use of force, use of tasers, we're constantly updating. By the end of the year, we've looked at every policy that was on the books when I arrived here four years ago, and made sure that it's up to date and will have my signature on it, which is important, because I still have a few general orders left, obviously with Chief Kramer, and then you can go back, we even have a few with Chief Anderson. I want to make sure we've looked at all these policies. That's what he does on a daily basis. He also keeps updating homeland security issues. We get a lot of information from homeland security, which he goes through every day and disseminates to where it needs to go. He's also our liaison with several, they are Fusion Centers, and what's going on there. So that position is doing the same thing it did before, the only difference is, we're not doing the accreditation and creating the files and everything that goes with that, plus we're not spending the money.
And I would just end by saying that, as Captain Corsi said, you know, there may be a continuing reduction in money available to us, and so I think it's a fair question, at least for you to think about, is, you know, what recommendation you'll have when and if that time does come.
Oh, I've already thought about it, we, the city manager and myself had discussed it this year. Like the budget game, we were looking at some worst scenarios where we could save money, and I will tell you what would be in the person.
Yeah. Which is all we're talking about.
No, I mean, I think it's important, when you've got the biggest budget, which first place you all are gonna look, if things ever get to that point, it would be my budget, and I know that. And we did have discussions this year where we could cut bodies, or put bodies on the shelf to save money. So I mean, that is a-
And just for everyone's understanding, when you're talking about cutting bodies, you're talking about cutting positions, not positions that are filled at this time. Would be reduction in staffing levels by-
Correct.
-to normal attrition.
Well, I mean-
I don't want anybody to think that at this point-
Well, I know what you're saying, and what I'm gonna say to you is, if we ever reach that point, you may have to reduce police positions. I'm a realist, I mean, I go to conferences, I've talked with the chief up in Camden, New Jersey, where they had to cut all those positions, and I'm with a lot of other chiefs-
If it reaches that point, but we have not been talking about that this year.
No.
Thank you.
Just thinking about something else that you kind of alluded to in answering that question. And we're not talking about capital stuff tonight, and I think this is in and out year, but can you-
It's this year.
Are we? Okay. Just thinking about the police radios, and trying to get a better handle on where we are with the current system, because-
Why don't you come up next?
Because my sense was, when I first heard that there was gonna be a big expenditure, that it was like, gee, didn't we just do 800 megahertz? And then I thought, well, maybe that's been a lot longer time than I thought, and kind of where we are with that.
Right now, Montgomery County, the current system, Motorola designs them to last, have a lifespan of about 15 years, at which time they cease to support the product, which means all of the parts needed to maintain the infrastructure are no longer produced. That in mind, the county has elected to stop using the current system, because it's no longer being maintained, they do have some spare parts, and move to the next generation of technology, which is what Prince George's County has, District of Columbia has, and other places, that right now, we can't talk to them, because we're a generation behind. So in three years, the current infrastructure that we communicate on will no longer function, which means all of the radios that we currently own will no longer work. We will have to upgrade our entire inventory of vehicle radios, plus personal radios, to ensure that we continue to have a functioning radio system. Over the next three years, the county has already been in the process of purchasing all of the new radios for their officers. We will be able to continue as we are, and the county's gonna be forwarding us some current system radios to get us through the next three years, so we're not going to have to buy any of the old generation radios, so we need to start looking at purchasing the new radios. They're a more costly product than the current ones we're using, so the price is going up. And I know that we've had a lot of back and forth about how to find a way, over the next three years, to slowly add these radios into our inventory, so that we're not stuck with, you know, a $500,000 bill in three years to upgrade all of our radios, our console system and such. We've talked with Motorola, the vendors, about how best to make that work, and we've pushed back, you know, some console upgrade money in the capital improvements, to make some modifications to what we have, so that will continue to function. But all of the radios will have to be replaced, all the radios, the batteries, the holders, the mics, everything has to get upgraded, or we won't be able to have a radio system.
And to do all of that, did I hear you say, like, on the order of 500,000?
It's 400.
It's, yes, sir, it's 480-some thousand dollars, so give or take a few dollars, depending upon, you know, change of prices between over the next three years, I mean, we're looking just under $500,000.
And so how do we have that in the CID?
My proposal has been to move those expenditures from the Equipment Replacement Reserve to the Speed Camera Fund, and that's what the proposed budget reflects.
And that's spread out over three years?
It's spread out over three years. The big hit will come in FY14. We'll probably talk about Speed Camera Fund a little bit more next week, but one of the things that I did try to note in the transmittal message is the need to take some of the fund balance that is projected at year-end, and assuming that the radio equipment stays in the Speed Camera Fund, some of those funds do need to be set aside and restricted, so that we have $400,000 in hand when we hit FY14. We're kind of slowly getting into that process. Rick, maybe you'll be able to help me out. There's some purchases expected to be made in FY12, another allocation in 13, and then the huge hit in 14.
Yeah, we've always- Go ahead, Captain.
It's about $50,000 in each of those years, and the bulk of it's in FY14.
I might add, the county's been very cooperative in working with us and assisting us, so we can get through the next three years. Originally, we were a little concerned that it was gonna happen all at once, and-
Did our six years of 800 megahertz kind of come at the tail end of that? Because you were talking about 15 years for the technology.
We've used them for about nine years, for 800 megahertz.
Okay. So by the time, it's over, it'd be about 12 years. And I would add, since I was in the county when we started 800 megahertz, it was a slow process. That's why-
Well, yeah.
It was too slow, because when I left in 95, we were still playing with it, and it went on entirely too long, and it was several years after I left before they actually got it up. So they were slowing getting up, so we didn't get the full 15 years you would have gotten if they'd been a little faster than what they did.
And my sense is that one of the reasons that Prince George's has the next iteration is because they skipped the iteration where it is.
Yes, they never had an 800-megahertz system.
They were far behind, so was DC.
So they're looking ahead now, but only because they were so far behind?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a lot of really significant accomplishments in the last couple of years. I'm really proud of the work that all of you have done. It's actually very impressive. And I was very glad to hear of the increase, increasing emphasis on gang activity in the area, because I had been hearing from residents about it, expressing concerns, and so I'm glad to hear that also. I'm a big fan of something, of prevention on this kind of stuff, and I know you are as well, and I was interested to hear some of the things you started to do in that general prevention thing. And we have talked a little bit about some more cooperation activities with Recreation. And I would strongly encourage you to continue those, you know, exploring collaborations, efforts on what you can do together, and so on. I won't go into a lot of my own personal history here, but let's just say that I think, you know, dealing with youth and prevention activities is really a very important, very important activity, because it does divert a lot of people from a path they might go down, that's not where you want them to go.
Well, I met with Deborah today, we're gonna try a pilot, we're gonna have an officer working a little closer with Recreation, looking at some youth prevention programs where we can partner up, and we're looking at doing a little bit more in the gang prevention and going to the schools- and going to the schools. Actually, the officer spoke at one of the schools today and I got some really good feedback. So we are making an effort. I know it's been suggested to me on several occasions and we're taking a look at it. An opportunity's come up where we can do something. So we're going to look at it for six months and see how we're doing and what effect it has.
The other, the other thought I've had on this, and I know I've talked to you about it, is making a little more effort in the general training program you have for your officers to do a bit more training on interacting with youth, you know, learning some of the latest techniques for how to do it, you know, what's the current thinking on this, that, or the other thing as a way of making sure our officers, when they interact with folks on the street, can do the best job they can with, with that interaction.
Well, we're constantly looking to upgrade our training each year. Lieutenant Bowers is in charge of that. And each year, we look at what everybody, we look at other jurisdictions, what are they doing and how we can improve it. And outreach, not just to youth, but to our seniors, to our adult community is a big thing on my plate this year. We've identified it as an issue we want to improve upon. So we're looking at to do more. Like I said, we've, looking at the youth right now. We're looking to do some things with the seniors and the rec department also. So we're going to take a look at some things that we can do to improve the outreach. And we want to get the officers thinking more outreach, getting out of the car more and doing a little bit more talking, which I have identified as an issue that I think we are lacking in a little bit.
But it's nice to have the training so that when you do get out of the car, you have some things in your kit bag, ways to start conversations, how to answer this kind of question, how to, I mean, there are, there is a lot of new, interesting thoughts on how to do that sort of thing. And it's, I'm glad to see that you're going to be moving in that direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. Oh, one question, the first question is how, Chief, is, how do you feel about the way your, your chief's advisory committee is functioning? Is it, is it working out for you the way you anticipated it? And is it giving you the kind of feedback that you need? And are you getting the kind of people on it that are, the kind of people that, that you want to have on that advisory committee?
It's a work in progress. When I started it, I think I mentioned to the city manager in some of our meetings that usually takes about two years to get it to where you want it to be. And that's basically what happened in the last two departments I've been in. We just brought on four new people, actually, we brought on five new people. So five went off who couldn't make the commitment I was looking for. The five, the other seven that are on have been very, are getting into it and have been very representative of their neighborhoods. Is it where I want it? No, but I think it's headed in the right direction. I'm excited about the five new people that just come on the board. I think they're going to add something to it. And I think it, it'll take probably another year, but it's, it's headed in the right direction.
Thank you. Well, one of the questions or concerns that I have in Ward Six is, is the apparent continuing gas station robberies that seems to have been happening for a while down on the, the southern part of New Hampshire Avenue in our city. And I know that you're, you're working, you said to us before, you know, inter, inter jurisdictionally to kind of put, to corral these efforts. And I'm just wondering how you see that going, how that effort, your satisfaction with the progress that you're making in that area?
We have a detail, which I won't go into, that's been very successful. The one that happened, I think, two weeks ago, Rick? Two weeks ago, we got tied up on another issue. The detail didn't get in place in time. Since the detail's been in place, we have not had any robberies, any thefts there. My frustration is a lot of the victims, with the exception of maybe one or two, are not from Tacoma Park. I think the message has clearly been put out, as I think everyone's read to our residents. But we have other people that obviously travel New Hampshire Avenue. The message has went out on TV. I've done it on TV. Metropolitan PD has done it. We just got to get the public to, when they pump gas, to lock their cars and especially our female population, since they do go after purses. But we are going to, we've committed to our detail, which we are running, and so far it's been successful in preventing, like I said, the one time we got hit, the detail didn't get in place because we had other issues that come up, which is going to happen occasionally. But we have a pretty strong detail. We're still trying to get the message out there and Kathy continues to put things out. Our residents, I think, are getting a little tired of hearing it, but we need to get the message out metropolitan wise. The funny part is Montgomery County has not had as many, according to my crime analysis, we have. They don't have the problem. It's Prince George's County, DC, and us that have had the problem, which was surprising. I thought it would, but last week when we, I asked them, go back and talk to the county again, and they're not having it. But we're going to continue the detail indefinitely. And obviously, this is one where crime prevention can solve this a lot better than the police.
Well, I, I still continue to be interested in the possibilities and the promise of, of using video surveillance cameras in the public right of way along New Hampshire Avenue and of course, University Parkway in the, in the Tacoma Langley area, not only because it can serve as a deterrent, I think, by, by criminals to the extent that they may be where such a system might exist, but also simply because it might help you to close out cases and find the people you need to find a whole lot quicker. And I know that the speed camera money obviously could be used for that. We've also learned that it is a costly capital layout and you've already got some major layouts ahead of you that we learned tonight about the, the radio equipment. But one thing I'd, I'd like to see this, in this coming year, is attention focused on trying to, try to acquire or at least finish our analysis of what that would involve so that it can come before us on the city council and we can at least look at it and get an idea of what the benefits and costs are. Is that something that you can perceive doing and say in the next six to 12 months?
Well, I thought, we have presented some information to you. I continue to be updated and I go to many conferences on the cameras. I think we, we have a package that we presented that has the cost in it. And, I mean, we're waiting on word from you all, what you want to do. I mean, I think the ball's really in your court at this point. I continue to get updated, so I know what's going on in that area throughout the metropolitan area. But I think Hyattsville was a very good example for us to follow since they're almost the same size as us, with the same issues as we have. So I think we've got the, the information here for you all to discuss and see how far you want to go with it. And yes, the camera fund could be used for that one, definitely.
I guess what I, unless I missed, missed something, I guess, while I'm aware of some of the analysis and comparisons Hyattsville that, that actually have been going on, we've been, you know, supplied with, I really haven't discerned of the, any advocacy on, on your part that this is something that you would really like to see happen to the extent that we can afford to do it as opposed to something else. And so, I mean, if this is something that the police department feels that would be advantageous, that's not something I've actually understood to this point in time.
I think the camera program is very advantageous. I think it could be very positive here in Tacoma Park. There is a cost with it. There's a personnel cost. Like the speed camera program, you're going to have to have people that work it. It would change, it would change the look of how we do certain things. The cameras, it's, it's an investment because you continually update them. There's a lot of good information. I think we've got the information. I think the question now would be for the council. That's a policy decision on your part, where you want to go with it and how much you want to spend. I think you tell me you want to go ahead and obviously we'll find a way to do it. I think we have good information and yes, I think it would be a positive program and it would definitely work well in Ward Six with the shopping center areas down there. It could also be a, a value down in Old Town where you have a lot of businesses also.
There's a big difference though also between us and Hyattsville in that respect in that their program was primarily financed by a corporate sponsorship that would not be available to us. It's not, in fact, not really available to anyone anymore, but it's certainly not available to us.
We looked into it to see if that source, and we looked into several other sources, like everyone else, that has funds have dried up in the private sector.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to be careful that we don't get ourselves into a situation where we're totally dependent on, say, the speed camera money. And then if that money diminishes, then we're kind of put ourselves into a bind where we have technology that we can't afford to, to, to maintain. So I'm not getting all on the horse tonight on this. I just wanted to have this discussion. And finally, I just wanted to thank you and the entire staff there for the work you've done in Ward Six this, this year. Particularly, I noticed that a lot of the, that the traffic enforcement duty is, is being carried out along a lot of these roads on this side of Tacoma Park. And I think it's making a discernible difference. And I just wanted to thank you and say that we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I do. I forgot to ask this one. Since we asked one uncomfortable question, I'll ask another one. And it concerns a citizens oversight committee. Many cities have these committees. And I've heard from a number of residents that why doesn't Tacoma Park have one? An independent body that would oversee what goes on in the police department, particularly handling any complaints that come up, citizen complaints that come up. There's a lot of models for how that would be done and so on. We don't currently have one. And something occurs to me, which is things are actually going really well with citizen and the police department. And so to me, that seems like a better time to start developing such a committee rather than when relationships are really bad. You know, you have, the chief has a great relationship with the community. And I think that this would be actually, if I had to pick a time when I wanted to start something as potentially adversarial and controversial as that, this would be a time when I'd want to get it up, running and, you know, have it working well.
What do you think it's going to do? Because the advisory board's basically oversight now.
Well, the advisory board is picked by you. This would be an independent body.
Do you really think when you pick someone in Tacoma Park that they come in and they're independent? I don't think there's a committee here. I mean, that, they, they see everything we do. They bring issues to the table each week. It, I see it as an oversight. That's why I created it. It's not like we have an internal affairs problem because we don't.
No, we don't.
That's what most oversight committees look at when there's, you know, all kinds of police issues. That's not a problem in this department. I think my record on discipline speaks for itself. I think what we have now is an oversight committee. You had the public safety committee before, which was supposed to be an oversight committee. And I, I think we all have had that discussion. I don't want to revisit it, but I think we went to a direction. I think the oversight committee that we have now is, is working well. I think it's headed in the right direction. I would ask you to wait and bring those people in and see if what you were looking for isn't being done by them already as opposed to creating another committee. That's my, I have nothing to hide. So I welcome any citizen oversight. I'm the one that created a committee of citizens. Yeah, I do select them. I don't think that makes a difference in the independence of the people that I bring because I don't think anyone in Tacoma Park is going to serve, is going to be my flunky or my crony. I think it's a very good group. And if you look at the people, most of them, everybody in this room knows, they're people that represent Wells. So I think we have something in place. I would ask you to, and maybe we ought to bring them in at the end of the year because I think, you know, you gave me the opportunity to do that. And I welcome you talking to them and what we're doing. I think it's still, they're still learning their role and what to do. And I think with the group I just added, with the group is starting to get some experience at what we're doing, they're asking good questions. One of our members is Christie Lopez, who works for the Justice Department, who just finished doing New Orleans and did Oakland. And if you want oversight, you couldn't ask for better oversight. And I've worked with Christie now for almost three years on other committees. So I think we do have oversight. And I would say maybe we ought to schedule one night this year where we bring in the committee and let you talk to them and see if they are doing it. But I think there is oversight there. I welcome oversight. I think it would be overkill at this point. I don't see it as an uncomfortable question. I think we are doing oversight. I created it. I asked these people to come in. The way I introduced them to us, I'm looking for you to look at the department, tell me what's right and wrong. We used Christie when we did our taser policy because what better source do you have in your community is a lawyer that's led the study for both Oakland and you saw New Orleans. There wasn't anything light hitting in the report they just released. And Christie was a major part of that. I think she's a great resource for us.
Well, as you just indicated, other cities have these. And I think it might be worth exploring whether making the committee a bit more independent by having it selected by, not by you, some other selection process, for example, you know, might be the way to go.
I'll be fine with that. I don't-
And my, my point, Chief, is that I don't want to, I don't want to have to deal with this issue when there's bad feelings between the citizen and the police. I want to deal with it when there's a really good relationship because then the processes, as you just outlined, you get the processes up and running. It takes a little while to get them up and running. They are running. I think they're doing a good job myself also. But I have heard from a number of residents who feel that Tacoma Park should have something more independent than what we currently have. And so I think it's worth exploring. Maybe we should have the committee and get their thoughts on it also.
I will bring it up to the committee in our next-
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just like to throw my two cents worth in on this subject. I, I thank my colleague on the council for making this suggestion. I think back of where we were when we dissolved the public safety citizens advisory committee, been a couple years ago now, I think. Yeah. And, and kind of what, how the council was interacting with the committee and giving direction to the committee. And so I, I think I could support Councilmember Snipper's proposal, but I think, I think the council has to be doing a better job of interacting with the committees before that is going to work. And that's maybe not just, you know, the public safety citizens advisory committee or some new committee, but also our other committees. I think that's an area that this council needs to work on is, is what we, how we form the committees, how we interact with the committees, and how we give direction to the committees, and what we expect from the committees. So certainly interested in, willing to, you know, look into Councilmember Snipper's suggestion. But I would, I think we have work to do before we're ready to do that.
Let me just say, I agree with, with us. Councilmember Seale's comments, and that's one of the things that we're going to be doing, is looking at how we interact with and give direction to committees. Councilmember Reagan, another question?
I do agree with Councilmember Snipper that you want to do something like this when you have a good relationship between the police department and the citizens. And I think we have a great relationship now. I, so I'm not opposed to the idea, but I would want to know more about whether that model that, that has existed in other cities, I know it mostly in large cities. So I'd be curious to know whether that model is applicable or has been helpful in smaller cities first. Because I do think it's a different dynamic. I think actually we, as the council, we have a very close connection to the citizens. We represent relatively small wards. And, and I feel like we are quite connected to the police department also and, and the city manager and the chief listen very closely. So my concern would be in doing that, would we just create another layer and another- So my concern would be in doing that, would we just create another layer and another body of work that the police department has to do, and it might not add value? So I just want to know more, is it really utilized in a small city like this? And I would be kind of hesitant to do it unless I really could see value in it, because I do think it could potentially create a lot of work for the chief and not really add value to.
Well, what I'd ask is, let me bring in the, set up a night, obviously with the mayor, where we bring in the citizens advisory board. I'd say give me to the end of summer, because I've got a lot of new people. I believe the citizens advisory board that I have right now is doing what you want. Councilman Wright is right. In big cities, and I dealt with it in Louisville, it's generally for disciplinary things where there's major issues between the community and the public. Most people find the advisory board created, at least, and I would tell you, go talk to Front Royal, which is still in place, it's one of the most active, they do oversight, they do talk to the council, they're a big advocate for the police department, both pro and negative if there's things that go wrong. I think it's something that's in progress. I think we'll meet what you're saying. It does have oversight. They bring stuff to me, and we look at it, and I report back to them. It's getting them more involved, and people that can be there each week has been my biggest issue, which is an issue with a lot of our committees. People sign up. I think I'm headed in the right direction, but I knew when I started, it took me two to three years in Front Royal, it took me two years in Kentucky when I started the boards, and I think this board is headed in that direction. But the good news is we don't have internal affairs problems. Our complaints are very minimum, and they're handled. I think, I haven't had a complaint yet to go to the city manager in any way we've handled discipline in four years. Hopefully, it'll stay that way. We don't have that many problems to start with, but we do handle the ones we have. And, I mean, I would ask, before we go to the next step, let me bring the committee in and let them talk to you all, see where you want to go.
I agree. I look forward to hearing from the committee, and also look forward to hearing Councilmember Snipper's, you know, ideas, if he refines that some. But I think another aspect of it that Councilmember Wright reminds me of is, a question I would have is how well do those types of oversight committees work in a, in the state of Maryland? Because we do have the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights, which interjects another dynamic that we would have to consider.
Here's, you know, here's what I would say. I think we went through this discussion about a year ago, and we talked about the Public Safety Committee, which was independent, and was, as I think we all know, was floundering and basically drowning. For an oversight committee, from my perspective, and having an advisory board, if I'm not open and opening the doors to what's going on in the department, and I think I am, and I think the committee would tell you that, I bring them up to date on everything. The only thing I can't discuss is personnel issues or confidential investigations, which you would understand. I think we have an oversight committee, and I've opened up for people to be on it. We had six this time, last time I think we had about 18. So I think it's open out there, and I think the public is invited. It's not a closed session, so anybody can come, and I would welcome whoever's talking to you, if they don't think there's oversight, to please attend those meetings. I mean, they're welcome to come and see what we're doing. See, I think we're doing what you want, and I don't have a problem down the road if you all want to change it and let somebody else select them. I'm trying to get people that are active, because I think, you know, there are some committees that work really well here in this city and some that don't, and I think the only way it would work well is working with the people as closely as I think I have to get that kind of oversight and get the type of people.
I would just, I'd just like to ask one thing, and then I'll drop, but are you going to be here forever?
No.
Okay. You know, the next chief may not be as open and cooperative and as competent as you are, and so.
Appreciate the compliment.
Well, it is, and we want to, to build a structure, a process, and structure that, you know, allows for the potential for other problems. And as they, and as my colleagues have said, it's better to do that now than in the future.
I don't have a problem. I, what I'm saying to you is I think we have the thing in place. I'm trying to put a thing in place that will be here long after I'm gone, to avoid some of the problems that you did have in the past.
Right.
And that's the whole purpose of getting it. Public safety wasn't doing it. I think everybody in the room knows that. This advisory board has worked well in the past. I think you heard from the lady from Front Royal who had served on it and how it became so active in the community. Some of the chiefs down there, look at me today, though, because I'm still very close because they work for me, you know, you created this monster that keeps getting bigger and bigger. It's not a monster, it's very active, and it does do oversight in Front Royal, in the sense that it asks the questions I think both of you are asking. That's what I'm trying to create. I think we're headed in that direction, because I agree with you. I'm not going to be here forever, and neither is my staff. There could be.
Yeah, thank you. Never mind.
Don't go there.
We go someplace.
But, Chief, that's exactly why I want.
And I understand that. I know where you're coming from, okay? And I understand that. That's why, look, my legacy, if I walk out of here and everything falls apart, doesn't say much for me, does it? I don't want my legacy to be that. When I leave here, when I leave here, I want this police department to continue what we've started.
That's right.
And I like to think that two of these guys are going to be here a long time. They're my people. I selected them, and I think they're going to carry on that legacy of what this department stands for and what Tacoma Park's all about, with its police department. So I think we're all on the same page, and I think, I think you talking with my committee, and if we need to tweak it, we can tweak it.
That's.
I will also tell Congressman Wright, Councilman Wright.
Congratulations.
Not yet. I just got notified as we're sitting here, there was a burglary at 7301 Maple this afternoon. We haven't, I'm not sure. Is that in the city?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's his block.
Find out where the command sum raises.
So I, I think we'll take this opportunity to say thank you all for being here. Thank you for all that you do, and just continue the great job.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And we appreciate, thank you for bringing it to my attention.
I'm not sure. I think maybe a city, city of Tacoma Park Councilmember probably has a much better reputation than members of.
Thank you. That's my.
Congratulations. Kenny Collington? Thank you.
Yeah.
This is a motion.
And also what sounded out of the brain, you said Captain, it sounded like Captain Puddy.
I know.
Okay, we're ready for library.
Hello?
Sure.
Okay. A short one. We have had a really good year in the library in terms of, in terms of use. Circulation is expected to rise by just about 10% this year, while in library use of materials and program attendance have leveled off a little bit. Nonetheless, our program attendance is expected to be nearly 14,000 this year, which is quite a lot with one children's librarian. This is mostly, though not exclusively, from children's programs. This year, we added a new program for children, a junior band books club for grades three, three through eight, and we've just begun a new family program, looking at prospective Caldecott Picture Book Award winners. And this has been actually attracting adults and children. The resume building workshops we offer with Gabe Heilig have been very successful, and we hope to continue those next year. We're planning to provide two new computer center programs this coming year. One is a self-directed internet driver's license program for kids with specific tasks, quizzes, and certificates for those who complete the program. That's something Phil Shapiro is interested in doing. The other is some photo editing training for adults and children. Our volunteer shelving program is continuing with a combination of student and adult volunteers, and the Friends would like to continue their outreach efforts with kids at the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. Dave Burbank is going to be doing some Comic Jam programs at the center with the Elmo projector that the Friends gave us, and the Friends have also funded the purchase of some additional books for younger readers, especially sports biographies and some other topics. We're also exploring options for online access to audio and ebooks for our patrons, and we will experiment with a mobile interface for basic library information. So now, take your questions if I may.
Councilmember Wright, give your questions.
I did have a question.
I figured I'd go to you, because you're a past president of the Friends of the Library, right?
Well, I wasn't the president, but I was the treasurer.
You're the guy with the money.
So a couple of questions. One is, do you have a sense of how much the Friends of the Library raised on behalf of the library last year?
Yes. It was over, it was $13,541. That's what they gave to the library.
Great.
In gifts and donations.
Super. One of the proposals is around raising the fees for Montgomery County residents, I guess, as well as non-residents.
Non-residents, yes.
If you don't misread me from wrong, as proposed, Montgomery County residents who do not reside within the corporate boundaries of Tacoma Park currently pay nothing, they would pay $37 a year, I think is what we've talked about. And then for those who don't live in Montgomery County, it would go from $10 to $60.
That's right.
So how did we come up with the round number of $37?
Okay, I'll, I'll explain.
Ellen and Rebecca's fine calculator.
This is, Rebecca's my mathematician. I think I have an explanation here, and she can add to it if it's not altogether clear. The city's cost to serve Montgomery County cardholders outside of Tacoma Park is about 26% of our total budget, but the contribution we see, we receive from Montgomery County is 10% of our total budget. The per capita, right now, the per capita cost of library service is just under $60, and that's what we propose charging non-residents, that is, people in DC and PG County and so forth, who now pay $10. The charge for Montgomery County residents who now pay nothing will be the per capita cost of library service prorated. That is, the $60 per capita cost minus the 38% that the county pays to support Montgomery County residents living outside Tacoma Park. So the, so the $60 per capita less the 38% paid by the county comes to just about $37.
That sounds like a very rational, logical way to calculate.
It's very logical, and this is Rebecca's work.
I wish the county might use formulas and logic in their calculations.
As simple and understandable as that.
The other, the other, the additional piece is that Montgomery County residents, because they'll be treated as non-residents, they'll have to renew their card and pay that fee every year, whereas now it's a three-year card.
And how do we assume, what, what number do we use to assume what that, that will produce in revenue? Because I hope we're not assuming, if we know this many Montgomery County residents are using the library now, that they're all going to continue once they have to pay $37. So do we assume supply and demand, or sort of suggest that demand might reduce as price goes up from zero to?
That's probably true. And, and also, it's going to take, it's, it's really part of a three-year cycle, because the Montgomery County resident cards will be expiring, you know, a certain number each year.
So we're not going to make them pay immediately this year, we'll wait.
Well, the people, yeah, we're going to grandfather them until their card expires, so approximately, say, a third would be paying the additional fee beginning July 1st, and then so on and so forth.
Ellen and I just talked about that. I will pretend to understand all the complexities, and you probably don't want to hear them, but basically trying to cancel their cards midway through the three-year thing was just overly problematic, and by the time they tried to explain it to me, I gave up and agreed.
But do we do assume sort of that, in our calculation, what's revenue will be as a result of this? Demand won't fall at all?
Well, demand will fall, but our calculation, and, you know, we really don't know for sure how many of those people are going to renew their cards. We know a certain number will, but, I mean, there are people who use the computers, computer center on any given day from all over the area, and, you know, $10.
Is your sense, is that because the computers are often available, and it's the closest place where you can actually?
It's a good, it's a well-run computer center with a staff, a knowledgeable staff person who is there all the time that it's open. Computers are in demand everywhere at all libraries. But, you know, ours is, ours is very well-used. Getting back to your original question, okay, we're, I, yeah, I don't, I think we, do you remember how much?
It sounds like the simple answer is yes, we've taken that.
We've tried to. And I don't have those figures, but I could certainly get them to you. I don't have them.
I think all we wanted was the yes.
And just to be clear, we're not, we're losing any cuts to the library. There's no reduction in shelvers.
No, 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 no reductions in staff across any department or changes in facility operating hours this year.
I have no, I don't have a question.
The revenue, actually, we calculated for the first year for Montgomery County residents would be about $7,000. For the second year, $11,000, and for the third year, $15,000. And then adding in approximately 1,875 for the anticipated non-residents paying the full 60, and you have something like just a little bit under $9,000 for 2012. $12,877 for fiscal year 13, approximately $17,000 for fiscal year 14. And we're also going to be increasing the costs of copying from 15 to 20 cents for black and white copies, and from 15 cents to 50 cents for color copies. So.
Any questions?
From 15 cents to what?
15 to 20 for black and white, and to 50 cents for color copies. They're very expensive to produce, and most libraries do charge more for color copies than we do.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. This is fascinating. I love the library myself. Spent many hours there, still do. I have a question about, you mentioned the ebooks and other similar technologies. Can you talk, say a little bit more about what you're thinking about in that general area?
We're considering some possibilities. Would you like to address this with my notes? Just some options.
Because we're a small library, the things that are most feasible for us are the things that the price is based on population size. You know, we can't compete with large library systems when that's not taken into account. So, although the first thing, Tumble Books is so affordable, it's not based on population, but it's $1,000 a year. So Tumble Books is for kids. Both subscriptions for young kids and slightly older kids come together to about $1,000 a year. It's absolutely beautiful. They go in through your internet site and open up picture books, if they're little, chapter books if they're older, which are then read to them. There's audio and visual, and you turn the pages. A large number of the books are in French or Spanish, so it's multilingual as well as everything else. I quite loved Tumble Books when I was exploring these. They don't even have to have a library card, but they do have to go in through your site. So it's a resource that would be available to all the kids, whether their parents let them have a card or not. So for adults, the proquests from which we now get electric library, full text newspapers, and a certain number of reference sources and so forth, have bought up something called eBrairie, which is a large collection of nonfiction books and reference books. And the state of Delaware, for example, is invested heavily in this for the libraries. But this would cost us about $4,000 a year for the subscription. That's the lowest price. That's based on our population, and that's their bottom level. These, another vendor we use is Epco, from which we get the full text magazines. I don't know if you've ever used, we have really good electronic databases right now. They tend to be reference or newspapers or magazines. They purchase net, why am I going blank here now? They purchase Net, why am I going blank here now? Net Library, which, they're going to completely redo the interface July 1st. I really can't tell you what it's going to be. They sent me trial links and so forth. This is where we'd probably go if we want to do downloadable audiobooks, which I think eventually we'll have to do, because the way tapes disappeared, is media, CDs are going to disappear, and it's going to become all streaming downloads. So sooner or later, we have to go in this direction, downloadable audiobooks probably. With those you buy, you buy, right now, the way it works, you buy by picking your publisher or your distributor of the audiobook. So a Blackstone subscription would be, I think that was $2,000 a year. A Tanter would be a little more than that. Those are, publishers of very classy audiobooks with... And then another possibility we've looked at is for languages, is Mango. You know anything about online language instruction in English and many, many other languages? It's about 1,000, it's about $2,000 a year. The kid module, which you can't get unless you have the adult module, is another $1,000. There's Penciller language training for kids, so, this is what she was beyond, so forth. So those are the things that we've talked to vendors and looked at the products, got copies, things like this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz, you have anything?
I just wanted to say, I, I did, kind of wondered to tell you that I'm, I'm very interested in the idea of these, adjusting the fees for non-T Tacoma Park residents. Obviously, that's a kind of a theme of mine tonight, is one of the issues that I was curious about relative to Recreation Department, but certainly, it seems to be extremely relevant here, and more so with, with our library. I, there was some information that I have read here in the last few days that I received, but I, but I can't seem to find it now. Must have come in by a, some sort of an email or something with regard to some of the material that was just discussed. So I'm not going to go over it in detail since I can't get my fingers on it here. But it, it just, I think it, it bothers me, just in principle, that, you know, that we have people in Silver Spring, let's say, who don't pay the taxes that we do, but yet have, gain the benefit of our very unique library that greatly differentiates itself from the Montgomery County library system and its many of its unique offerings and its, and our library is so sensitive in its programs to the peculiar needs of our residents, and yet, we're allowing folks who don't pay the taxes that we so dearly need to, to take advantage of these services. Not that I would want to drive them away with exorbitant fees, because that would be a risk in the other, in the other direction. But, you know, when you, when we talk about, oh, wouldn't it be interesting if we annexed the, as we did a few months ago, that area of, of Silver Spring that lays east of Flower Avenue, and there was some, some not serious conversation among us members of the city council about what that might involve. And one of the very first comments was, well, why would anybody want to have to pay increased taxes to become citizens or residents of Tacoma Park when they can give access to the recreation programs and the library and all that other stuff without having to pay anything for it? Well, this is one, one reason I think we ought to have this differentiation in fees so that people might have an incentive to sort of say, gee, it really would be nice to be a, a, a resident of, of the city of Tacoma Park, because we would save a lot of money by being able to access things a lot more cheaply if, if we did reside within the, the city boundaries. So I, I encourage staff and all of my colleagues here to, to think in this direction, because of course, it'll also help us to preserve the library and its, and its great programs, which I'm, I'm very proud of. I think that's about all I want to say at this point.
I did, I...
Your eyes are working?
I did. If anyone's listening in the control room, we seem to have wireless connectivity, but no connection between the wireless and the internet from either the council chambers or the second floor wireless.
Is your message, you can't give an IP address?
I'm getting wireless, but, so the wireless connection comes up very good, and then the connection...
You think it connects?
Yeah, it won't connect.
So you're probably a lack of sufficient number of IP addresses. We are having that problem in the library. It's because people are walking around able, explained with mobile devices of all kinds. Everybody who walks through the building grabs one of your IP addresses, but on their wireless device. And so we are, we're not lacking the wireless capacity, we don't have enough to sign IP addresses.
Technically, if you're wrong, you should stay, be able to stay on something.
Yeah, most people who are wrong can stay on, and then you lost it.
Yeah, we're losing it.
Okay, forget that explanation.
But it sounded good, though.
So, yeah, okay. So...
Step, Chris.
Actually, I, I mostly use the library to retrieve my children. However, everybody else in my, my family uses the library and loves the, and loves the library. My partner checks out, you know, novels, and my kids are in there. I feel like I'm single-handedly financing the library through late fees, since my children lose their books all the time. But, but, you know, they're in there all the time, and they, and they absolutely love it. And I continue to be impressed with all the activities for the kids and the interaction that the staff has with the children and the graphic novel stuff. My, my little kid didn't read as, as, as quickly as my, as my older kid did, and it's been fun to watch her. She's into the Captain Underpants series and the Pokemon stuff, and the, she's picked up from the older kid, the Japanese...
American.
Yeah. They're a little bit old for her, and trying to keep her into Captain Underpants. But just really loving all of that, and it's been really terrific, and I really personally appreciate all of that. And I hear from constituents how much they enjoy all of those services, so I'm saying thank you.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
So I have a comment and a question. I'm really happy to hear you come with the information about the digital library, because I also don't use digital library stuff. However, all my friends on Facebook all seem to have Kindles, and one of the things that I have noticed is that they're checking out books somehow through their Kindle on the libraries.
I'll, I'll give my little speech here. A Kindle is not a public library-friendly device.
It's just a reader, right?
Yeah, you can't, you can't borrow library books on your Kindle. You can borrow, that's not Amazon's business model. Amazon's model is to sell you books. So they may be giving away Kindles for free by the end of the year, because anybody who does, reads two books a month is paying over $500 a year to Amazon, because you can only buy books from Amazon. Nook, Sony, Kobo, all of those you can borrow library books on.
Okay.
So there's a big gulf. There's a big difference.
Maybe it's like the term Kleenex or Xerox, and they're just using that word for whatever reader it is they have.
So if you buy a Kindle, you're locked into Amazon. You're not going to be using a public library.
Well, that's, that's good information to have also. If I, if I buy a Kindle for somebody, or if I buy a reader for somebody in my family, I'll keep that in mind.
Who wants to borrow library books.
Right.
There's a standard format, EPUB format, and that's used by everybody but Amazon.
Well, thank you for the information. So I'm, I'm very interested to hear that the library is exploring that and exploring electronic media, because that's clear that that's where we're headed in the future, and I'm very interested in that and how we could help support those activities. So I wanted to throw that out there also. And I have one question for you, which is the same question I had for the library, or for the Recreation Department. So you utilize volunteers, and I think probably more volunteers, since we had the budget and staffing cuts last year. Would you find it useful to have a volunteer coordinator who helped to recruit and retain the volunteers that you utilize in the library?
I, I was interested in that question when, you know, when you asked it of the Recreation Department. We actually do have a process for recruit, I mean, most of our volunteers now are to do the shelving. We have two adults and the rest are students getting ESL hours. But we have, we actually have a process we go through. They have to fill out an application, they have to do a written test, and they have to do a practical test so that we know they can do the work and have mastered the Dewey system sufficiently to go out and shelve, you know, at least our fiction. And that process works well for us. And also, I think Deborah, what Deborah said was correct. When you meet a student and know that this is something they really feel an inclination to do, they, they understand public libraries, they spend a lot of time in them. Some of them are excited about shelving books, and so that works well for us. And we are so flooded with volunteers that we need someone to sift through them.
How much time a month do you think you spend on developing volunteers and recruitment and retention of volunteers?
Well, recruitment, there was a lot of time spent on recruitment at the beginning by Karen McPherson, who supervises the volunteers, but also Wanda Shung, who is our permanent shelve. She does, she trains them. So we had a lot of new people coming in at the beginning of the program, and we just lost one person, so we're going to recruit someone else. It can be, it can be fairly labor-intensive. I couldn't give you a number of hours, but it's definitely, you know, an additional piece of work that, that you have to consider when you're putting a program like this together.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for coming tonight at this late hour. I'm not going to keep you alone myself. I just wanted to thank you for the great work that you continue to do with the library. I really am excited to see the move towards the electronic age, and I thank you especially, Rebecca, for your constant urging in that direction, and I thank you, Ellen, for your open-mindedness and leading us in that direction.
Rebecca's leading us all at the library in that direction and has made herself very much an expert and makes it all a lot easier for all of us.
And I know that she has worked at that for years, and it's really good to see it come to fruition now. And then also, I thank you and really appreciate your use of volunteers. I think that you are doing what, what I had in mind when the council was urging you to make a larger use of volunteers, and I, again, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Youth programs, I mean, everybody's got to know...
That's right.
You're great.
Oh, thank you.
The library, yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. You want to say? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we're done.